Good afternoon, everybody. It's two o'clock and welcome to the first Cabinet meeting of 2020. There are a number of items today, but probably the most significant of those is the Budget, in which we set out what we propose to do with the public's money. So there's been a considerable amount of work and effort that has gone into preparing that budget, not just internally but in terms of also discussions with other organisations that we partner with and interact with. So we will spend some time on that when we get to that point in the agenda. Just to remind members, of course, that this is a recommendation from Cabinet to Council and that the Budget itself will need to be approved by full Council on the 4th of February. Just before we start the formalities, can I just remind everybody that there are no drills anticipated today, no fire alarm sounding, so if you do hear any alarms going, then please leave this room and head back to the main reception and out into the car park. Secondly, in line with our general guidance on social media, you're more than welcome to use any form of social media, please though do respect the meeting in the sense that try not to do anything that will actually disturb the business of the meeting. Can I remind Cabinet members, please, to make sure that they speak clearly into the microphone? Can you just check that it's working, that it's switched on? And indeed, any members of the public or members of the Council that will be speaking later, hopefully you all will be familiar with the microphones. And then finally, just again to remind the public that as per our constitution, the deputy Cabinet members do not have a vote, and that's Alison Griffiths and Mark Newty. So when we do vote on items, they won't be raising their hands. Now, apologies for absence, has been received from Natalie Brownhall. Item two are the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 17th of December 2019, which have been circulated. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any item on the agenda?
No.
Thank you very much. Item four then, the first item on that, are members' questions. Has been a question from Will Forster, Divisional Member for Woking South, and a written response. I can't see well in the audience, I assume there's no supplementary question. There are no other public questions, there are no petitions, there are no representations received on reports to be considered in private. So we move on to item five, which are the reports from the select or local committees. And I think we have Nick Harrison and Bill Chapman, if you'd like to speak to the report that you submitted.
I think Bill is going to speak first on the Adults and Health Select Committee meeting.
Yes, my comments have to do with the meeting we held to discuss the Budget. And I know that those have been gathered together, all of them have been gathered together and presented by Nick Harrison. We've got a reply from Mel Few, which I've read, and thank you for that. The points I'd like to make are, I think they're pretty well written down, but I will go over them briefly. The fact that the Equalities Impact Assessment wasn't available to us before the meeting in good time, we were made aware of it just the day before. And that really seriously affected our ability to scrutinise the budgets. And I would point out, for instance, that the Chairman of Health Watch Surrey hadn't received a copy, and her comments on the budget reflect that, I think. Nevertheless, the members of the committee were able to raise many of the concerns that are raised, items that are raised in the Equalities Impact Assessment. And I think one of the things that we'll be wanting to do, I think our main line of inquiry during the coming year, is to check that on risk management, that impacts on residents, on carers, on others, of the programme that's going to go ahead are noted and that some corrective action is taken. So we'll be wanting to follow that. However, my overall assessment, having looked since at the Equalities Impact Assessment, is that it's very well led and the efficiencies that are required, although they're challenging, I think are achievable. So moving on to public health, I think Mel has said how the Budget has been arrived at, and I'm sure he's right, but what I'm asking is for the Budget to be looked at from a different point of view. So rather than saying, as happens now, you know, we've got this much money, so this is what we can do into the transition programme for the Health and Wellbeing Board, it would make much more sense to go through the Health and Wellbeing Board Transition Programme, decide what service you wanted from public health, and then to work out what that would be your requirement, and so have a requirements basis that you can state that would have some backing to it, and you then have ammunition to go to government and say, you know, we're being stopped from doing everything that we think we should do because of this Budget. And that's the end of my submission.
So should we comment on that before Nick carries on? I'll say something, Sinead, do you want to say something at this stage on the public health point? So I think that's absolutely right, and that is the plan, as I'm sure you'll recall, the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, the 10-year Health and Wellbeing Strategy has identified within that three key areas of priorities, and then granular detail beneath those in terms of how we're going to deliver those three priorities. And secondly, there are something like 38 metrics that will be measured, so that when we look back, we can demonstrate that there has been genuine improvement in outcomes. So that piece of work, and ongoing, we'll absolutely look at how we use the Budget to focus on delivering those priority areas. We do know that Surrey has one of the lowest per capita funding on public health, for reasons I'm not sure we're aware of, but that is the case, we have less per head than pretty much anywhere else. So that is an area of conversation to be had with the government, but completely accept the point that we need to make the best use of that Budget to deliver our wider health ambitions.
Can I come back, please? I don't think that really covers the point I was trying to make. What I'm saying is that each part of the transition programme should be saying, you know, what are the services that public health can provide us? What do we want of those? Therefore, what resource is required? I mean, it may be that it turns out that it doesn't require as much as is being provided, I doubt it, but that would be a correct way of determining your real requirement for public health spending.
If that's different, then I apologise for what the answer gave, but Sinead, do you want to...
Thank you, Leader, and thank you, Councilor Chapman, for your observations and your feedback from the Select Committee meeting. I thought it was a very long and productive meeting, and I know that myself and Simon White, Director of Adult Social Care, and Ruth Hutchinson, Director of Public Health, really appreciated the committee's input and feedback, it was incredibly useful. In regards to public health, I do think your observation is a very strong one, I do think it has been answered in part by the... But I would add to that, there is a clear case for an alignment, to look at the public health priorities and realign those to those services that are under huge demand and increasing pressures, such as adults and childrens. So I think there is a clear plan to look at how we do realign those priorities. So again, thank you for that useful feedback. With regards to adult social care and your observations from that Budget, firstly, I apologise that the Equalities Impact Assessment wasn't available in good time, I know that has been taken back, and measures will be put in place to make sure, you know, those documents are circulated in the time that's needed for everybody to absorb the information. So thank you, and apologies for that. I do think that it's really useful that members of the committee felt that they were able to raise their concerns, and I think also it was acknowledged by the committee that the overall assessment was that the Budget is a challenging one for adult social care, but there seem to be succinct and clear plans in place to work within that Budget envelope. It will be a challenge, but as I say, myself and the Director very much appreciated the committee's support and direction as well during that session, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Bill. Nick?
Yes, thank you, Leader. Just to summarise, all four of the Select Committees, as you know, met last week. I think we had a good set of papers, we understood the pressures and we had the efficiencies and savings set out, and I think that's a much improved process over previous years. And we had a separate schedule on the risks. Of course, with one week really to look at these papers, although they were sent out in advance, we had little opportunity to do any real bottom-up work, and we would appreciate in future years, we understand the general election, we would find it very helpful to participate in those meetings in the calendar year, as it were, before Christmas, and also to see a draft. Now, that may necessarily be in private, but I think we would get more candid and helpful suggestions if we operated that way. So I hope we can work that way in future years. Looking at what we did cover in our resource and performance meeting, we had quite a debate on SEND. I think we were... I think in the end we concluded we did understand the high needs block and the fact that this was fully provided for, but we do want to make sure that we get the recovery of that overspend in future years from government, essentially. We noted there was a £10 million budget reserve, and that would take us up to probably about £40 million, which is helpful, and on top of that, we do have this Budget Equalisation Reserve, which is set out in the papers, which provides further contingency, and you know, it may be required, we identified the Eco Park as a project and adult care, and maybe SEND as maybe calling upon that. We did have a discussion on headcounts, and I think this is a matter we'll take up with the Strategic Director of Finance. Moving to the specific responses to the four recommendations, I think I've dealt with item A, which is about a greater role for Select Committees at an earlier stage. I think on the transformation projects, these are on the papers today, we had a seminar yesterday, again, I think there has been insufficient time to really look in detail. I anticipate that Select Committees will be looking in their spring series of meetings to understand those more fully, and indeed, they're paramount to achieving the savings that we want to get out of the process. And I think we probably agree to disagree on the matter of early red, amber, green ratings of the Budget proposals, we will certainly be looking at them as they come forward in the actual results. There's one specific recommendation which came out of the highways area, and that is about increasing spending in buses. I would thank you for the response, it explains what we're doing, there's a slight increase, 3%, and there's an exposition of how that money might be spent. I think it doesn't quite answer the concern of the committee, which was to spend more in that area on top of the 3%. Clearly, that would involve spending less elsewhere, and that's a balance that must be set up by the Directorate and the Cabinet member. And the last item, well, deals with public health, which Bill has dealt with, so I won't say any further on that. So I would like to thank Cabinet members, like to spend the, in particular Mel, and also for officers in a good set of papers, and hopefully these comments will be of some value to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. And can I add my thanks to the Select Committee Chairman? I mean, this is the first Budget under the sort of the restructured Select Committee structure. As you've highlighted, the timing of the Budget, the full Budget going to Select Committees was impacted by the general election, as with many other things, and the announcement of the settlement, which I think came between, well, just before Christmas. But I think that, you know, the Budget, I don't see the Budget as a static document, you know, it needs to be a living and breathing document, and I would hope that, you know, the work of the Select Committee, I mean, I would hope that you, Select Committees, would own the transformation programmes as much as the Cabinet. You know, there's been some really good work done on the greener futures and those sorts of things, you know, I think we have a good structure there for working groups to pick up more of the detail, you know, but the transformation programmes are absolutely key to moving forward in the way in which the services are delivered and are modernised and so on. So hopefully that will be viewed as a joint ownership and joint pieces of work. In relation to C, I mean, Mel and Matt might want to comment on these generally, but, you know, the Rethinking Transport piece of work is a fundamental piece of work, it's looking at the whole way in which transport is delivered across the county, not just buses but also trains, you know, it needs to address the greener issues as well as congestion issues, you know, we need to encourage people to get out of their own cars and get on to public transport and into shared transport. So although there might not be a specific commitment in this Budget at the moment to increasing revenue and increasing capital spend, you know, we will be having that dialogue over the coming months, at ways in which we can genuinely address those issues, and I would be surprised if that doesn't mean that, you know, I suspect that we will be investing more in the public transport network. So the point is well made, and will be picked up as we go forward. Now, was there anything you wanted to... No? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to continuing with the work over the Item six then, are decisions, any decisions taken by the Cabinet members, and there have been two, which you will find under item six, that relate to the Committee in Common. The Committee in Common is a committee that has representation from this Council and also from Surrey Hartlands, Surrey Hartlands being the organisation that delivers health services within the county, and this is about having joined up procurement, joined up procurement process. So there were two decisions there for noting. So item seven then is the final Budget for 2020/21 and the Medium Term Financial Strategy. So this Budget focuses on tackling Surrey's inequality, supporting independence, working in partnership, embracing Surrey's diversity, creating a greener future, supporting our local economy, and delivering a more joined up health and social care system, and leading to a digital revolution in the county. I believe that we're absolutely clear as an organisation what our purpose is, and I believe that we now have the ability and the tools to deliver on that. There is, of course, the continuing uncertainty around long-term funding, the previous government had started a piece of work called Fairer Funding, which was to look at how authorities should be funded going forward. We will find out soon, I suspect, whether that work is to be completed and what that means for this authority. It would be our plea, and every authority's plea, and every organisation, I suspect, that we work with, that there is some long-term certainty around funding that will enable us to perhaps take different decisions if we can look at this on a more long-term basis. And we'll see where that goes over the next few months. We are proposing to increase council tax by 1.99% this year, which will support our sustainable funding base for future years. We do not know whether the one-off payments that we receive this year in relation to adult social care and in relation to children, or those with special education needs, disabilities, whether that will be an ongoing payment or not, so we must budget on the basis that it won't necessarily, we won't necessarily receive that in future years. We will also then be taking up the 2% increase in adult social care precept, which has been proposed by central government, and I think will help us manage our adult social care budgets. As the Prime Minister has said, this is a national issue, it is a cross-party issue, and now I hope with a more stable government in place, real progress will be made in addressing that as an issue for our society, and that some form of long-term plan will evolve to deal with those pressures in a more sustainable way. Indeed, as local government, I think that we have a great deal of experience in how adult social care should be delivered, and I would very much hope that central government looks to us, amongst others, for input into those discussions. As you know, as I've said many times, we spend a million pounds a day on supporting our vulnerable adults, and half a million pounds a day on supporting our, looking after our children, and that will continue into this next year. I think that the, Mel will deal with the detail, but there are a couple of points I want to just make in relation to the capital budget. We have spent a lot of time this year looking at that capital spend, to make sure that actually it's properly focused, and that it's focused on delivering things for our residents that are both visible and needed. There are many areas that this Council looks after and has responsibility for, and the most visible of those to our residents, of course, are the roads. We will be spending an extra £92 million on improving what is 3,000 miles of roads and pavements. Pavements are as important now as road surfaces, if we are to encourage people to walk more and to cycle more. We'll be spending £84 million on projects to protect the environment and to help tackle the climate emergency. Mike Goodman has led some really good work in terms of initiatives, deliverable initiatives that this Council can pursue, and we will be investing in solar farms and low ultra-emission vehicles, electrification of transport services and so on. We have already announced £270 million in relation to flood alleviation schemes across the County of Surrey. Those are important, both for our residents and, of course, for businesses. We have also announced a fund to invest in our communities, not only are the high streets struggling in many areas, but also our communities are lacking or have lacked in investment. We have put aside £100 million over five years to be used for capital schemes, and this Council will spend some time over the coming weeks looking at what sort of schemes that money should potentially be used for. More importantly, we'll be engaging actively with our local communities to understand exactly what they need, and that will vary across the county, from north to the south to the east to the west, but it will be a genuine attempt, more than an attempt, it will be, and our ambition, to make sure that that money goes to where it's needed to enhance and support our local communities. We'll also be putting in a further £70 million into additional school places, and indeed to improve school facilities across the county. There are many other areas that we're also addressing, but those seem to me some of the key and important highlights. So I hope that when people see the detail of this Budget, which Mel will take you through in a little bit just now, that they will see that this Council now has got itself into a sustainable financial position, as well as improving the delivery of services, and the next item, we will talk a bit more about what that means and what that looks like. But that, you know, although we will be increasing the council tax to ensure that we can continue those services, at the end of the day, we are now, I believe, out of any form of crisis from a financial perspective, and have the ability to make some choices going forward. So Mel, would you like to pick up from that?
Thank you, Tim. As Tim has said, a Budget is a living document, and it does set out a set of circumstances and conditions for the year ahead, in which we are planning for going forward. From my point of view, this Budget is one of which, for the first time in my ten and a half years as a county councillor, represents a Budget which is balanced without the need to use the reserves, and provides a basis for significant investment in infrastructure, which will enable the Council to deliver its 2030 vision and beyond. Before proceeding to highlight the various Budget items, a word of thanks must go to the officers, particularly Anna de Lysandria and Rachel Rigley and their teams, who have spent weeks working through all the scenarios and accepting in good faith and suggestions any recommendations made by myself and fellow Cabinet members. Unsurprisingly, delivering Budget numbers for the next financial year will have its challenges, particularly in the areas of growing demand for both adult social care and children's services. Despite these challenges, the Budget has been produced on the assumption that no reserves have been used to balance it. To achieve this position, notwithstanding the transformation programmes, backed by hard work over the last two years, which has reduced the ongoing cost to delivery of services by close to £200 million, the Budget includes a further transformation programme, which is planning for further efficiencies of a £38 million. Central Government, as Tim has said, provided the funding certainty for the years 2021, but no indications of what level of funding will be received for the out years of the medium term financial plan. Therefore, the out years are based on projections for income... Therefore, the out years are based on projections for income, for the income element and some degree of certainty on the budget spend envelopes being developed. This is explained throughout the report. One positive development however is that the negative RSG has now been removed, and the overhanging threat of the county having to pay back the government 17 and a half million pounds has been alleviated. It should be noted that for the first time in 10 years, the central government funding for this council has increased, resulting, taking us back to the funding levels in 2010. If I now turn through to the budget details, the individual service narratives ought to be found in section three, pages 14 through to 25 of the report, and highlight the main strategies and issues relative to each service, and I will not go through these details here. If I turn to the main drivers of the budget, which is the revenue and expenditure, on revenue, it is budgeted to increase this year by 39.8 million, and this is detailed in table four on page 29. And the main items of this table are council tax, as Tim has indicated, we are proposing that the council increase its council tax by 1.99%, which will generate 17.9 million for the year. This will represent an increase in band D for, band D households for one pound eleven pence a week. As the county is responsible for the safety and wellbeing of over 19,000 vulnerable adults, the government has recommended that councils with such responsibility, which includes Surrey County Council, can apply an additional 2% on the council tax bill to cover the continuing increased cost of providing these services, and this is planned to yield another 14.9 million pounds. The details of the council tax receipts are set out in table three on page 28. The council has also received other income, in addition to the precept mentioned above for adult social care and council tax, the government has also awarded those councils who have responsibility for adult social care, a further fund of 1 billion pounds for this financial year, to support the additional growing cost of adult social care. Surrey will receive 14.2 million of the 1 billion. Recognising the state of children's services throughout the county, an amount of 810 million has been allocated to local authorities, which Surrey will receive 13.5 million, and this has been allocated to the reserves for the send budget. The full details of the income set out in table four on page 29. Turning to service budgets, the revenue sources to fund the service budgets are detailed in page, on table five on page 31. The overall net service budget of 968.4 million has been established using the 1920 budget as the base and increased by the expected inflationary factors for staff and providers, which total 22.9 million, and service pressures of 55 million. These details are set out in table five on page 31. Recognising the growing demand on services, a full list of likely pressures to be faced in the coming year, total 77 million. As men, as against this mentioned above, the services have been tasked through the next round of transformation to close this gap and have identified further efficiencies which total 38 million pounds. A summary of the pressures and efficiency proposals are set out in annex A on page 49. The details of each service pressure and efficiencies are also set out on page 50 through to page 59. The final subjective budgets by service are then detailed in annex B from pages 61 through to 69, which set out the flow of the budget from this year's budget through to the next year's budgets, budget figures. Turning to the capital expenditure, the medium term financial plan incorporates an ambitious investment of capital projects, which as Tim mentioned, total 1.4 billion over the next period. Table nine on page 41 breaks the expenditure down into budget, into the budget and outlying years, and splits the type of projects into ongoing service demands, community investment fund as Tim mentioned, and pipeline schemes. These pipeline schemes are projects in the course of development and are included for the purposes of calculating potential borrowing requirements and also the minimum revenue provision over the period. The capital budget expenditure for 2021 is 175.7 million pounds, plus the first tranche of the community development fund of 20 million, and other pipeline projects of 68 million. The capital expenditure plans over the next five years is projected, as I said earlier, at 1.4 billion. Pages 71 through to 73 set out the projects for the budget year and the medium term. The financing of this programme is summarised in the last block on page 73. Annex D sets out the proposed movements in reserves following the budget acceptance. Annex E sets out the impact of the proposed council tax precept increase of 1.99% and the 2% additional ASC precept. As mentioned earlier in this report, there is a need for further efficiencies to be achieved in this budget of 30 million pounds. To assist in achieving this target, a second round of transformation projects has been developed and are listed with the associated costs and expected benefits in annex F. Annex G provides an outline of the capital strategy of the council and supports the details provided in annexes H and I, and lead to the treasury management strategy. Annex K, which runs from page 129 through 237, contains an exhaustive budget equality impact assessment, and members are encouraged to read that in due course. Turning now to the recommendations which are contained on your budget pages from pages five through to seven, there are 12 recommendations with the Cabinet to ask to note and or approve, and recommendation 13 is requesting approval from the Audit and Governance Committee to approve the treasury management strategy and prudential indicators as set out in annex J. I think that kind of summarises the overall budget.
Thank you, Mel. Is there any Cabinet member that wants to make any comments? I was proposing that you went through line by line your individual areas, but certainly go on back.
Thank you. I want to join Mel in thanking the officers for the preparations of the documents. We had a very good discussion at the Select Committee, the efficiencies are indicated alongside the expected expenditure, and I also want to remind members and all present that in the spring, when we look at the transformation programme, we can look at it side by side with the budget, and we can see how it all relates. I know it's a piece of work that the committees are anxious to get on with, and we are anxious to hear what they have to say, because obviously delivering on the transformation outcomes is intrinsic to the sustainability as exemplifying this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mel and the team for what I think is a fantastic budget. It's very easy to be critical of financial budgets, especially when it comes to the public sector, but this is very resident focused. It's very exciting with the capital project moving forward, that we're going to be able to do so much more for our residents, to make them feel safer, to improve their way of living and getting around Surrey, and for once, it's nice to be able to turn around to residents and say that we are really doing lots and lots of positives for them for now and in the future, and long may this last. I think it's absolutely fantastic.
Thank you. Colin?
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, Mark stole some of that, but to thank Mel for his hard work, he's thanked the team, but I think his hard work, and I think your own description was he's like a dog with a bone in getting some of this sorted, bringing it to the surface and sort of highlighting this out, and actually making it very readable. There's a lot of documents here, but actually it is very readable and digestible. I think it's an exciting time for this budget, I think first time since I've been a councillor, it's really nice to see some proactive work within this, and we've still got some challenges over the next few years to face, but at least now we're starting to look at how we invest in the county, invest in services for our residents, and invest in the things that our residents need and see every day, and address some of the items that actually come into our inbox every day, so I think it's really positive to be able to see that work. I think there's still a lot of work a few years ahead of us to achieve some of those targets, but it's really nice to be in the positive position and start to think about the art of the possible and what can be done. So thank Mel and the team again, and it's really good to be in this position, and I do encourage people to, I know there's a lot of paperwork here to read and digest, because there's some really good stuff in here.
As long as you're not going to thank Mel, then you can, I think he's been thanked enough.
Thank you, Leader, and thank you, Mel. I'm just wanted to express really how good this budget feels to me. It is good to hear the words that the county council is out of a financial crisis, although we are a little bit unclear about what the future does hold, it's so reassuring to hear that. And it is very exciting, I feel, to be in this sustainable financial position, because for the first time in a long time that we have heard, we're able to really do things for our residents within Surrey, and obviously being the adult social care and public health portfolio holder, I'm really thrilled with this, because it means that we can deliver a very ambitious and comprehensive programme of supported housing and extra care accommodation for our most vulnerable residents in the county, and that's incredibly important to be in a position where we can provide our vulnerable residents with choice around their accommodation, ensuring they have greater autonomy and an independence in their lives and become fully integrated within their local communities.
Thank you very much. So there are, as Mel has said, 12, 12 recommendations, and then the 13th one, which we'll deal with separately, so I'm not proposing to read out all 12 recommendations, I think you, I hope, well, you have read them, hopefully those are agreed, so are those agreed, the 12 recommendations? Thank you very much. And then the 13th one, which is a separate recommendation to the Audit and Governance Committee, is that approved? Great? Thank you very much. So this will now go to full council on the 4th of February, no doubt, for a further review and discussion. So item eight, then, leading on from that, although arguably we could have had that, this item before, deals, talks about our transformation programme for the next phase, so we've come to the end, I think, of phase one, and we move into the next phase. Just to remind people that, you know, we have the 2030 vision, which is our sort of guiding principles, which was a vision that was just agreed with a wide selection of partners out in the community, you know, but the two key areas of focus, the two threads that run through all of this, everything that we do is about genuine desire and ambition to improve the quality of life of our residents, and to address the inequalities across the county, including inequalities of opportunity, but also inequalities of life expectancy. So everything that in some way or another comes back to those two ambitions. We have made some real progress, we've had over 20 programmes of transformation running pretty much at any time, a number of those have now been completed, some of them have been refreshed, and then we have now added in new ones. Those transformation programmes have been very focused, there is no sense of complacency, although we have, we have been able to now put forward a budget which I believe really starts to look at investment back into our communities, there is no sense of complacency about the work that still remains to be done, not just in financial terms, but in terms of the quality and the way in which we are delivering services, so I would hope nobody would think that there is any sense of complacency about that. But we have delivered, will have delivered by the end of this financial year, some 200 million of efficiency savings, and that has been done by looking at how the services are delivered, particularly in children's services, where, which has been an absolute priority for us, and it was very pleasing to see that. The Commissioner for Children's Services that we had working alongside us has now recommended that his work is finished here, and we await the Secretary of State's hopeful approval for that, but that, you know, that has been significant improvement in our children's services. So this has been, you know, a whole process of looking at how the council was operating and identifying better ways that it could do that, and that's, you know, not just in terms of internal restructuring, but also looking outside of this organisation, to other authorities, to identify best practice, and we've had a lot of help and support and enthusiasm from many other organisations to help us on that journey. So the, you know, the key focus is around sustainability, to make sure that what we do, we do right, we get it right, and that we do it in a way that makes, is resilient and sustainable, and to that extent, it's about modernising our practice, but it's also of course listening to our residents, you know, it is not only their money, it is their lives and their communities, and we must at all times make sure that we listen carefully to what they're saying, and indeed, you know, looking to empower them, you know, the whole focus, you know, is finding ways in which we can support what it is that they want to do and what it is that makes their community, and that does, will look very different in different parts of the county. So the, there are eight areas of key, key areas of focus, which is on page eight of the paper, you know, which includes supporting independence and partnerships and the greener future and so on, those are, those areas, those eight areas are the key ones, and then there's a lot of detail that sits beneath that in terms of what that actually means, means for the residents and what it means for us as an organisation in terms of what we need to deliver, and the rest of the paper really starts to talk through that detail, and there is a lot of detail there, but, you know, in the interest, absolute interest of transparency, it does set out what we propose to do, how we're going to do it, what the outcomes, what the outcomes that we are expecting, the cost of doing it, and so on. So I would encourage people to, you know, to have a look at those, and indeed of course, as always, to feed back anything that they think would, you know, any comments that they have or any suggestions that they have, in ways in which we can, you know, look at if that's going to improve what, you know, the piece of work that we're doing. So I think that all of the Cabinet, all the Cabinet members have looked at detail in their individual area, they've all inputted into that, they've worked closely with the officers, you know, we are spending a lot of time here making sure that there is complete alignment between the priorities, starting with the vision and working down, both the priorities and the budget, so that where we have identified an area that we need to do more on, we have put the money behind it to do it, so. I think, so the, I think that's probably all I'm going to say in relation to this, I mean, again, there was a member seminar yesterday, so hopefully the members of the council are very familiar with it, and I hope members of the council will spread the word, as Colin has said earlier, in the context of the budget, we need to make sure that we talk in plain English, in residents' language, and not local governments speak, which is all too easy for us to, a trap to fall into. I hope that, you know, this paper in particular, which is basically the work plan both for the Cabinet and also for the Select Committees, you know, this is, you know, this is what the Select Committees should be doing, is holding us to account for the delivery of these transformation programmes, and I'm quite sure that they will do that, but there is a clear plan there, there are clear priorities, a clear plan in how we can deliver those, they've been costed, and we will continue to move them forward. Colin?
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, I think that this transformation programme that we've followed and the transformations that have been achieved have been a challenge, and I open for two rings, number one is the outcomes they've looked to achieve, but actually in the time scale that we've looked to achieve them, so I think- So, I think, looking at what's been achieved over that period, and actually, a lot of that work is now embedded in business as usual and the way the council operates. So, I think that it's been a great exercise in getting us through this place and sets us up nicely for the next stage of this, which is actually transforming the services we put out there, how we control our budget, how we use the residents of Surrey's money to create the services that actually our residents need. So, I think it's been a great exercise and set us up nicely for the future as a council. So, you know, a great amount of work by the officers and would thank the officers involved in that.
Julie.
Cabinet will remember that at the last meeting, I brought forward the paper on the school funding settlement. And we've talked here about the budget being a living document, as indeed are the transformation programmes, if we are to deliver on our medium-term financial strategy. So, as an update, I'm just asking that you please note the Secretary of State rejected our request to transfer £3 million into the High Needs Block to support the increasing demands on our provision of service to children and young people with special education needs and disabilities. And I'm reporting this to Cabinet for minoting Back to Schools Forum on that matter. And again, it speaks to the importance of transforming our service and continuing to deliver a good experience for residents and an improved capacity against that demand.
Just to trail something I shared with the Cabinet this morning, which is that we will be arranging 11 public meetings later this year, one in each of the district or borough councils or in that area. And I hope and expect that residents will be challenging us over, you know, these transformation plans, what we said we're going to do, have we done that and delivered that. So, in the autumn, we will go around the whole of the county, and we will continue to engage, you know, this time on a face-to-face basis with our residents. And I'm sure that, you know, we will have questions on potholes. I can't imagine that we'll avoid those where they are getting less. We filled at least 50,000 potholes last year. But, you know, there are some really important things that this council has a responsibility for. And, you know, and again, we must make sure that we listen to the issues that are important to our residents, not the issues that we think are important to them. So, we will publish in the near future the dates of those and the venues of those meetings. And we will encourage all members of the council and indeed the press to publicise them as widely as possible. So, item eight, there are two recommendations. The first is to agree the council's refreshed transformation programme. And the second is to note that the investment required to deliver the improved outcomes and financial benefits through transformation will be considered as part of the medium-term financial strategy and the report to Cabinet, which we have just looked at and indeed to council on the 4th of February. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Item nine, then, is an update on children's services and the improvement. Mary Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. As you've already mentioned from the chair, the improvement of our children's services is a clear strategic priority of the council. And this cabinet has reflected the importance that they place on this by asking me to give regular updates on the improvement journey. As the leader said, everything we're doing is reflected in our priorities here. But underpinning the priorities, if you look on the bottom, are our guiding principles of all our work. And I think that the work that I'm involved in on children's improvement really fits in on the focus on ensuring no one is left behind. And if we don't do the right thing by these most vulnerable children, then we really can't claim that that's our guiding principle. So, with all of that in mind, and also recognising another reason that we have to do it, a secondary reason, if you like, is that the regulatory pressure that we're under from two different quarters, from the Children's Commissioner, who's been reporting on us, and from Ofsted. I think it's a huge pleasure for me today to be able to report that we've reached a major milestone on our journey to improvement. As you mentioned, Leader, that milestone is that the Children's Commissioner, who was appointed to monitor us, has made his final report and has recommended to the Minister that Surrey County Council should be allowed to retain control of its children's social care services. And the reasoning for that is given on page 329, paragraph five. The Commissioner said that sustainable improvement is underway in the authority and that an alternative delivery model no longer needs to be a consideration. So, it is a cause for celebration today. And also, it's not something that we could take for granted in any way. So, to indicate what I mean by that, if you look back to where we were in May 2018, when the Ofsted judgement of inadequate was given to us for the second time, the presumption at that point was definitely that we would lose our children's services. It's happened to two of our near neighbours, one very recently and one a while ago, people or authorities on our borders. And what the Commissioner had to do was to find reasons why we shouldn't lose the service. So, he's been looking for reasons why he should overturn that presumption. And the reasons that he's given are also made clear in the report. In paragraph six, he has said, "The senior management team is strong, and the authority has demonstrated a commitment to improving and prioritising children's services." So, it's clear that our new team of executive director and directors, our new ADs and many new service managers have all really led us to the point we're at now. So, I would definitely like to recognise that. Because as the resources and performances people who spoke earlier said, this is a directorate that is well-led. And it's only by being well-led that we've got to where we are. So, what has that resulted in? It's resulted in the first bullet point in paragraph six, "Progress has been impressive, and there is clear evidence of practice improvement and cultural change." So, the leadership has filtered all the way down to the front line that the actual practice is getting better. And that is why he thinks that this is sustainable. So, there is a little bit for us, Leader, which perhaps, without too much self-congratulation, we should also mention because it was dreadful reading that Ofsted report in May 2018 when the first sentence said, "Members and senior officers have been too slow to realise the severity of the problems." And "members" was the first word, obviously, that jumped out to all of us. And it's reassuring to know that this time, we haven't made that mistake. The political support has been consistent and delivered on the promises made when the authority went into intervention. And I thank you for the fact that you have asked me to keep bringing these reports to Cabinet and that you've all taken such an interest. In fact, all members and our district and borough colleagues and parish councillors and others have all wanted to make this work better for children. So, I'd like to say thank you to all of them as well. So, as you can tell, I'm very, very pleased. But I'm also a realist because this time, we have recognised the depth of the issues. And so, we can't just think that it's a simple fix. And the final, the only, the last bullet point I want to read out from the Commissioner's report, and I think this is as important as the celebration bit, "There is still much work to do, and maintaining pace will be a significant challenge. But the authority's come a long way in a short time, etc." So, I think I'm absolutely determined that we will keep up the pace. We've got a huge programme of work to enable us to do that and motivated all the time by making things better for vulnerable children and families so that we feel we can look them in the eye. Because I don't think we have been able to up to now for a very long time. The second regulatory intervention for us is Ofsted's continuing involvement. And we had the fourth monitoring visit at the end of October, beginning of November. And you'll remember from other reports like this that their visits are more targeted on particular parts of the service. And this time, they were looking at statutory assessments and child protection, child in need. So, in a way, you could say it's a first in-depth look at how our new family safeguarding model is working in terms of keeping children safe. And on paragraph 10, page 330, "The inspectors found that we've made substantial progress over the last year." There's a lot more detail about where the progress has been made. But the word "substantial" is really significant and pleasing in that. And again, I'm delighted. So, what about next steps on both of these things? Well, on the Commissioner's report and recommendation to the Minister, we're obviously waiting for the Minister to give approval to accept and publish. But we should note that the Children's Commissioner has already desisted in that role. So, I think we can assume that it will be accepted. And he has been funded by the DFE to become an informal adviser, to just help and support us, but not in a commissioner role. So, the whole of that has changed. Ofsted, what happens next with Ofsted? Well, we're expecting the fifth monitoring visit just before Easter. But this time, they're not going to tell us which services they're going to be targeting. So, that makes it a bit more like a mock full inspection. This is kind of taking me back to my teaching days. You get mocks, and then you get the real thing, etc. But if they don't give us a date at the end of that monitoring visit for the sixth one, then we know that the next thing will be a full re-inspection, either in the sort of height of summer or in the Indian summer in September. So, our directors' team are doing their own mock inspections at the moment. They started with the South East last week. And all of that is about really getting consistency of really good practice everywhere and checking for ourselves, rather than waiting to hear the worst from Ofsted. So, that's all ongoing. But there's a lot more scrutiny, there are a lot more priorities, work priorities, which are listed in the report, a lot about the actual work that we're focused on. I wanted to mention one sort of big overarching thing for the medium to long term. The council gave us, particularly me, a bit of a challenge on getting children closer to home, back into Surrey. So, a lot of things that are in the budget are linked to doing that, which I suppose you can say also links to creating a greener future. Because we do have a lot of children placed all over the country, which isn't good for them. And it also means we've got people travelling for contact with families, the families travelling, we've got social workers travelling, etc. So, we are trying to focus on bringing everyone closer to home. And in order to achieve that, we've got a new Mockingbird system of foster care, recruitment, retention, support for foster carers. And that's working really well with the first hub really well established, the second hub starting, and third hub on the way. And in the capital budget, I'm pleased to see that bringing children back closer to home is being supported by a review of our residential estate pipeline funding for that, leading with more money behind it to ensure that our own residential estate supports bringing children closer back into county. And again, since the last report, something else good to, my last report to Cabinet, some other couple of good things to report to you is that two of our own residential homes for children, Libertas and Burbank, have been, have had outstanding judgements from Ofsted, and these are not easily achieved. So, we're going, we know we're good at running those residential homes. We have the right staff, the right management. And if we can do more of it using the capital budget, it will, again, prevent us having children placed a very long way in specialist placements. Ultimately, our aim for all children is to have them in families. But sometimes, we need to have them in residential homes for a short period. Okay, so from priorities, just moving quickly to scrutiny. As you know, we've had an Ofsted Priority Action Board in place with an independent chair. The work of that board's now finished. And the reason it's finished is that we've worked through the Ofsted recommendations. Those are into business as usual, doesn't mean we're stopping doing them, but we've sorted it and become business as usual. But we're aware that we still need that scrutiny of all the improvement, regular scrutiny. And that is, I'm asking you to have a look in detail, really, about how we propose to continue that scrutiny. Because the second recommendation is that you agree the ongoing scrutiny arrangements. So, to understand those, we're intending to put that responsibility with the Safeguarding Partnership Executive, which again is independently chaired, in this case by Simon Hart. And the scrutiny of our continual progress will be held by them. The work of the Safeguarding Partnership Board more widely will also be, sorry, the Safeguarding Partnership more widely, not just the executive, their work will be focused and put in line with the work we're doing so that they're looking at the right things and checking up on our safeguarding all the time. We've got the Children and Lifelong Scrutiny Committee, Lifelong Learning Scrutiny Committee, who are also getting very involved in scrutinising us on an ongoing basis. They came recently to the Children's Single Point of Access and have really, you know, done a deep dive into that. I think the message, my message really, is that all scrutiny is welcome because it remains a priority for the council. And I would also draw your attention to the recommendation here that I come back and report to you again in May about the continuation of the improvement after the next Ofsted monitoring visit. So, there's sort of several levels of scrutiny, quite a lot more actually detailed in the report. But basically, hand over the OPAB work to the Safeguarding Partnership Executive under an independent chair, continue with scrutiny by our own scrutiny committee, you scrutinise through these regular reports. And just keep up the pace is what you've got to keep challenging us to do all the time. And just all of us bear in mind that it's all for the most vulnerable in our, in our county, and it does link back to our priorities. So, with that, if I could ask you please to support the three recommendations, which are at the bottom of page 327 and top of 328. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Both the pace and the focus, absolute focus. As we're having a thank you afternoon, can I, you started by saying the members and officers have not taken this, given whatever the phrasing was, can I thank Joanna Killian and Dave Hill, who have, you know, have absolutely driven this? And indeed, you, Mary, who has been exemplary in your role. I mean, this was almost an impossible task to get to where we are in the timescale that has been achieved. You know, we have, we have more to do, without question. You know, the Ofsted inspection will be critical, crucial. Not in that that's going to change the way in which we're dealing with things, but hopefully, will provide some reassurance to residents that the work that is being done here is the right work and indeed is paying off. You know, we, you know, we, there are very different issues in terms of adult social care and children. And the safeguarding issues particularly were a major, major concern. So, thank you all very much for getting us to this point. And yes, we will look forward to having not only an update in May, but regular updates after that because it is, it's, you know, the most important, probably the most important piece of work this council does. I think we had two hands up on this, aren't we, Julie? Julie.
I very much welcome the positive tone of the Commissioner's final review, Mary. And I also picked up on the way you linked our delivery of services to the recommendations of the Select Committee about underpinning the organisational strategy. I'd like to recognise the hard work of officers and colleagues and also the renewed commitment of all councillors here to the corporate parenting responsibilities that fall upon them. And I've noted that when you talk about it, there is always a note of caution rather than complacency in the reports that you're bringing to us. And that's to the good to keep us very focused on it. I think the general public will often conflate the issues in children's services with the issues in the special education needs and disabilities world. And I wanted to provide reassurance that we also recognise there's a lot of ground to cover with the transformation of our SEND services. It's fair to say that in March 2019, Ofsted recorded an improvement in four out of five of the areas. But again, we can't have any complacency about there only being one left because that one is to do with children and young people who are being absent from education, probably as a direct link to the special education needs that they have. So, I also recognise we've got a very long way to go to improve the journey, taking it from early intervention work through the day-to-day experience across that whole service to transition our young people into adulthood and the employment pathways. So, I wanted to register that with Cabinet as also a focus of great importance for the council.
I was just going to say, well, I completely agree with you. And a lot of them are the same children as well, a lot of the children that we look after. A lot of the children that we look after and children that need our help will also have special education needs and disabilities. Other children are only needing our help for special education needs and disabilities, but we have to get it right for all children. I do think that there are some lessons learnt, that can be learnt from the children's services improvement. And I think officers, we're in the same directorate and are really sharing that learning more widely now. Possibly necessarily, we focused a lot on children's services last year, and we really had to. But I think everybody's willing to put the same help and support in with SEND and officer to officer and member to member, so I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you. Zolli?
Thank you, Mary, very much. I think you have been very, very clear in your analysis of the situation. I found the Commissioner's report very candid. He, what he has to comment, he comments. And when he believes more work needs to be done, he's very clear about it. So for the most part, one can understand the trajectory. Mike, I would like to ask you a question, because the Commissioner appears to have written their last report, and as you indicated, there will be a next step. And also, what is this conclusion, which here is worded as, it says, the Commissioner's view is the sustainable improvement is underway in the authority, and that an alternative delivery model no longer needs to be a consideration? I thought, well, if I'm reading this as somebody really concerned about the work that has been done and the future, I would like to understand what that means. I wonder whether you can elaborate on what does he mean by no longer needs to be, we need to consider an alternative model? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Well, as I said earlier, two of our near neighbours have had their children's services taken away from them, local authorities. And what can happen if the Commissioner who's appointed decides there's no capacity within the organisation to do the improvement that's necessary? The children's services could be run by an independent children's trust, or another local authority could take over children's services. And, well, there's so many reasons why we wanted to avoid that. There would be, it would have meant a delay really in the improvement for children, because obviously there'd be a huge transfer of over 2,000 staff and, you know, an awful, a lot of that legal and management aspect. The reputational damage to the Council would be enormous, because I think that residents, they may not use children's social care services, but they want to know that the most vulnerable children are being effectively protected by the County Council with their council tax money. And if we can't do that, then residents don't have any respect for us in other areas either. Obviously, also for recruitment and retention of people within the Council, it makes it much more difficult if you have been deemed in such a bad way that you can't look after your own children's services. So for all of those reasons, I think it was important, really important for us, and most particularly so that we could, as I said earlier, look children, vulnerable children and families in the eye and say, we're doing a good job to help you, and that's where we want to get to. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine?
Thank you. And thank you, Mary, for your summary of the current position. It's really, really good news. I'm going to come across as a very positive person in today's Cabinet, because I really enjoyed reading the inspector's letter that's attached to the Cabinet report. Whilst there are, as you've highlighted, still things to do, and I did pick up the point around the importance of neglectful home conditions, and that living in a poorly maintained home can have a lifetime effect on a young person. So it was very good to see that clear reference to housing and the need to look and challenge that particular issue further. But what I really wanted to pick up on was the second to last paragraph, which I thought was great to read, that social workers enjoy working in Surrey. And I may be accused of starting a recruitment drive here for children's and adult services, but I think that was incredibly positive to read that. And it must be really good at the moment to be a social worker in children's services, to see this service turning the corner and improving, and to be part of that journey from an inadequate service to the service where it stands today, must mean that it is enjoyable working here in Surrey. So I would encourage anybody who's thinking of joining us in Surrey as a social worker in children's or adults to come and join us.
I fully agree. We've got a massive recruitment programme going, and we really could do with another, you know, group of social workers to join us. We've had 17 new recruits in the last three months, but we could do with 50 more, please, coming along our way. I mean, we've got others in the pipeline. I just wanted to go back on the point of neglect, because neglect, yes, there could be a housing aspect to it, but I think it's much more pernicious than that neglect. It can be in the biggest, most affluent household, in the biggest house, you know, the shiniest car. Neglect of a child's physical and probably more particularly as well emotional needs does untold damage. And we have historically found it very difficult to, it seems, in children's services, to identify neglect clearly in Surrey. When I say children's services, not just children's social care, but in health, in police, all over. And so it was, I have been over the years to a number of seminars and so on about neglect and how to identify neglect. But there was a fantastic one done this year by the Safeguarding Partnership. It was a doctor responsible for safeguarding from the partnership who led this conference, very high level speakers and hundreds of professionals from all areas of the county, teachers, doctors, you know, nursery workers, et cetera. And it just points the fact that unless all our partners are working with us on this work to do things like identify neglect carefully, we won't improve. So we should, in our many thank yous, have really thanked our partners as well, because they are crucial to us. Thank you.
Indeed. Okay, thank you, Mary. There are three recommendations which you've walked us through. Are those agreed? Thank you very much. Item 10 then is the admission arrangements for our schools. Julie?
Yes, thank you, Leader. To a level, the paper on the admission arrangements is business as usual, because this is an annual exercise for the Council. Surrey County Council set those arrangements for 98 of our community and voluntary controlled schools, and we coordinate offers with the remaining academies, foundations, free schools, trusts and the voluntary aided schools. So in total, over 350 schools in that section. The existing arrangements are detailed in enclosure one, and they are working well. They give stability and they give consistency for the majority of Surrey parents, for pupils and the schools. At point 14 and 15 in that enclosure, there are some changes highlighted. They relate to the use of a relative's address and to the arrangements for placing multiple birth children. They're highlighted in bold to make for easy reading. And they've been made in response to some determinations by the Office of the Schools' adjudicator, which is why we've included them here. Appendix one gives details of the published admissions numbers. Most of those remain the same as they were determined for 2020, although the pan for Ash Manor is increased from 210 to 240. And the recommendation at number two gives details of why the pupil admissions, the published admissions numbers at Wilbourns and Primary School is decreasing by three for September 21 admissions. If I jump then to enclosure two, we've got details of how to apply, the relevant dates and how to express a preference for schools. So there's really only two recommendations to highlight as changes. The first is recommendation one, the priority for introduction of children of staff from September 2021. So prioritising their admissions into the schools where their parent might be working. And recommendation three, although there's no changes to the assessment of the nearest school for 2021 admission, we will be taking a wider review of the use and definition of that nearest school before going to consultation on 2022 admissions. Again, this links to a determination by the Office of the Schools' adjudicator. It's about admission arrangements for 2020. And it should be noted that we've made clarifications to those arrangements and to the 21 admissions on the schools to be excluded when assessing the nearest school. That's in appendix three. But the more substantive consideration going forward is regarding the defined catchment area. We have extensive analysis of the responses to consultation at page 411. And the equality and impact assessment concludes that these policies will have an overall positive equality impact. So I would ask that Cabinet look at the recommendations on page 352 and seek approval for them.
Denise?
Thank you, Leader. I wish to commend the recommendation to introduce prioritisation for children of staff. It enables people to work locally, live and work locally, and to combine their parenting role with their staff role, and also aligns us with our neighbouring authorities for other schools in the Surrey cohort, so we can absolutely attract the best staff. So I think that's a great step forward.
And thank you for highlighting that, Denise, because there was overwhelming support for that. And it also, as well as putting us in comparison with our neighbouring authorities, puts our voluntary, puts our community schools in line with independent schools where they adopt that policy for their staff. So it makes it easier to recruit and retain.
Mary?
I'd just like to ask a question, if I may. Julie, as you know, you and I have regular meetings with the Foster Care Association Executive, and we've had a lot of representations about children who are living with relatives or friends of their parents under special guardianship orders. And the lobbying has been along the lines that they should have the same rights in schools of missions as other children who are looked after. So I just couldn't really understand from the response. I saw that someone had mentioned special guardianship orders being, they would like them to apply so that there could be exceptions made to the maximum infant class size. And they wanted also special guardianship orders in other, to apply in other admissions situations. Could you explain what we can and can't do, please? Thank you.
Yes, I've consciously looked at that through the report, because I've been in same meetings with you and had the representations from those carers who've taken children under a special guardianship order. It's referenced at page 357 of the report, and also in the detailed submissions. And unfortunately, at the minute, we're not allowed to change the infant class size regulations where a child is subject to a special guardianship order, unless that child also meets the definition of a looked after child, or they have come out of care to be on a special guardianship order. So we can't link the two together, which would seem sensible and reflect the concerns of that respondent to the consultation. And I think that's something that we need to take forward with the Department of Education to be able to effect any change in it. But we haven't been able to do that in our admissions policy at the moment.
Okay, thank you. This is the comments, there are six recommendations. Are those agreed? Thank you very much. And we're back to Mel. Item 11, the monthly budget monitoring report.
Yeah, thank you. It's interesting, one of the indicators that an organisation is beginning to change and the problems fade into the background is the length of the monthly financial reports. So we don't have to spend pages and pages explaining variances and giving explanations of why we didn't achieve things. So accordingly, my report for period eight is very short, and shows the trend that we're moving to a balanced budget for the year without the use of reserves. So to address specific issues, the month of November forecasts that by the end of the year, we will be close to break even on our budget. At the moment, we're showing £400,000 short, and work continues to produce additional savings to close that gap. And the key message covers both the areas of overspend of £13.5 million during the year, and offsets of £13 million, which contribute to our overall outlook. The main results of the services are detailed in table one and in annex one on the report. The main points to note in this report are the continuing pressures in children's services in the area of SEND, and the projected overspend, which we've dealt with earlier, of £29 million. And in adult social care, where despite forecasting a balanced budget for the year, they're beginning to experience an increase in the demand for packages of care. We'll have to keep our eyes carefully on those two elements. In the report on the capital budget, it reflects an increase of £1.8 million due to two items. One is additional schools expenditure of £600,000, and a £1.1 million increase in LEP-funded schemes for the Epsom market and Your Marketplace projects. That's the end of the report. The recommendations, there are two, to note and approve the amended capital budget as per table, three, and to note the Council's forecast revenue budget position for the year to date and the outlook for the year.
Are those agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. Item 12, on-street parking strategy review. Matt?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, nothing gets people more excited than parking and highways. So this is an update to our parking strategy, which was first adopted in 2011. So it's the first review that we've done in nine years to bring it up to date. And because highways very much touches every part of Surrey residents' lives, it's the first thing they have when they come out the door, we have to be aware very much so of the various uses that residents have. I just wanted to pull out a couple of sort of key positives in this report, if I may. The fact is, we are going to continue the provision of free disabled parking bays, medical permits. But a new one is we are introducing a carer's permit in particular, which will also be free. And this is all to help the mobility of our disabled residents and allow that access for the more vulnerable residents as well, who are in need of medical care from staff or relatives. In addition to that, we will also be having a childcare permit, which will be on the same basis as a normal resident one. And this will make it easier for families to deal with childcare arrangements as well in our controlled parking zones. Regular parking reviews are very key to keeping on top of obstructive parking issues. There have been new powers that have been introduced, which will allow us to introduce red routes, similar to those in London, and enable us to have camera enforcement as well to improve the traffic flow and safety. And we're continuing to lobby the government to make footway obstructions a civil offence, so that we, rather than the police, can actually start managing that issue. In regards to businesses, we're very keen on regular parking reviews, keep changes, keep pace with the changes. This is with the introduction of improved limited waiting facilities near shops and businesses. This allows access to be improved for customers and their deliveries. We have actually had a bid in one part of Surrey for, by the businesses themselves, to introduce limited waiting times in order to get that churn and stop people who have been literally parking their vehicles outside their shops for days on end. And very lastly, on these bits, it's about our residents. We've got some changes for resident permits, which I'm sure most people are focusing on. But it is about encouraging the use of off-street rather than on-street to improve road space, also to manage the highway itself. And also to encourage people not to have multiple cars on the highway and look at a more sustainable method of travel as well. We've also got improving safety outside schools with camera enforcement for the school keep clears to help reduce the antisocial behaviour that's outside schools. Electric vehicle charging trials are planned to commence this year. This part is still being developed with councillor Goodman, so that will be appended to this once it has been agreed. And it's very much to encourage the use of low emissions or electric vehicle cars. So, Leader, whilst it looks like it has with the fees been a sort of a sharp increase, I would like everyone to bear in mind it has been nine years. They are actually, we, they're to cover our costs. It fits in with what we agreed in December 2018 with our parking fees, the principle that because these are discretionary services... the principle that because these are discretionary services, the user is expected to pay the full cost rather than the taxpayer. We should not be using council tax or general reserves or revenue, sorry, in order to fund deficits for poor management of the parking services, which can happen in other areas. I'm pleased to say not here. So, Leader, the recommendations are set out. There are eleven, I'm afraid, it's quite a few. But I hope that this is sort of really shifting forward to a moodal shift. But in addition, it allows us to have a proper management of our network. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I invite Cabinet members to speak, Mrs. Watson, I think you wanted to speak on the item.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I really appreciate it. The report asks the Cabinet firstly to agree that local and joint committees should consider as part of the parking review process the introduction of on-street parking charges where appropriate to help improve access to retail areas or other facilities. Secondly, the Cabinet is asked to agree that where there is no parking surplus or other funding source to contribute towards parking review proposals, in the review will be limited to dealing with road safety and obstruction problems rather than parking schemes. I wish to express opposition to these recommendations in relation to Mul Valley. The assumption behind the recommendations is that on-street parking charges will be beneficial as they will help improve access to retail areas or other facilities. However, this will not help Dorking Town Centre, where we already have time-limited parking bays free of charge. Introducing charges will simply deter shoppers from parking on-street in the town centre, which will adversely impact footfall in the shops and will be detrimental to the economy. I placed a question to council on this subject at the last meeting and a question to the Mul Valley Local Committee, which unfortunately was not answered. A vote last week of all members of the Mul Valley Local Committee on introducing on-street parking charges in Mul Valley was unanimously opposed on a cross-party basis. This proposal is unworkable in Dorking. There are only forty-one on-street parking spaces in Dorking Town Centre, and these are grouped in mostly four to seven spaces in seven separate locations, all of which will require a separate payment machine. Based on the figures on the costs of introducing car parking charges at Norbury Park, the cost of a ticket machine was around £20,000 per machine. But a machine for four spaces charging £1 per hour between 8am and 6pm is not commercially viable. It would take years to recover the cost of the machines, and there is no business case for this proposal in Dorking. Please reconsider it, as it does not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, do you want to start?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, as councillor Watson has quite rightly pointed out in one and two, it is for the local and joint committees to consider this. We are not proposing anything for Dorking or anywhere else. What I would say is that parking is often raised. We do need to look at all the options. In the response to full councillors, you quite remember councillor Watson, Mul Valley at the moment operates up to a £90,000 deficit for civil parking enforcement. And I don't think it's appropriate that we continue these amounts of deficits going forward without looking at all other options. So you do have a number of parking schemes already in Dorking. I think you need to consider how the on- and off-street car parking relates. We are not proposing this. This needs to come from the local committee and the district council, which very much sort of is a key part of the town. So we're happy to talk. Our parking officers have been in touch. But I do think this does need to be considered. And I would also emphasise that Waverley, Guildford, Elmbridge, Surrey Heath and Woking all managed to operate these successfully, and the businesses ask for further reviews because they can see it works. I can't see why we can't make it work there, if that is something that Mul Valley would like to do. But it's down to the local committee to decide that, and we're keeping that decision with the local committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Colin.
Okay, first of all, on the increase of the CPZ fees, I support this. It has been a long time coming. One of the criticisms that parking always gets, we bring these schemes in and we can't enforce them properly. Actually, this will create more into the system to be able to do that. So I think this is a real positive going forward. I'm just listening to councillor Watson's comments on the town centre, because the next point I was going to add was on item one, which I totally support, and something I've been talking about for two or three years when I was doing Matt's role. This does work. It, you know, it's all very well having the free bays, but actually enforcing them is really difficult. So they are elongated, they're filled up with staff in the shops when people want to go shopping. Actually, what we need these for is clear, so people can get in and out and actually visit these shops. So I totally support the way this is going. And we need to change some mindsets around what, you know, how people are looking at this. You know, we have public car parks, they're there to be used. Mul Valley has some great car parking facilities within the town. Use the car parks and walk into the town centre. You know, it isn't the right to park outside the shop you want to go into. They need to be there for quick access, for things like that. And actually, some of the parking issues that are, some of the traffic issues going on in Dorking are caused by where some of the on-street parking is. So I think it needs to be closely looked at there. The carer's permit, I think that's a great idea, great support, and one that we've been looking at, criticised over a while. So really support that being brought in. I actually want to highlight point six as well, because I think that's a great thing. Residential developments that are built within the boundaries of current CPZs do not automatically get CPZs. Because actually, the CPZs are there for a reason, because there is a parking issue. So actually, if a development goes within that area, it must contain its own parking. I think that's a great one that should be brought in. We do some of that locally already, but bringing it across the county, I think, is a really great idea. So well done, Matt.
Thank you, Colin. Denise.
Thank you. I commend this strategy. I think this is really removing barriers and enabling prioritisation for those most in need of parking, on-street parking. Certainly, the carer's reduction to free-of-charge provision and also for the introduction of childcare permits. We have increased demand on our childcare providers to enable our residents to work and to be free to travel around Surrey, reducing congestion and potentially improving air quality. So I commend this review.
Mary. No. Denise, have you heard Denise? Zulie.
Thank you, Leader. For those of us who have served in the County Council for eleven years, you will recall that it generates great anxiety amongst our residents, any talk about parking, talk of on-street charges for parking, talk of new control zones or residence parking permit zones, as our residents call them. What these recommendations say clearly to me is that the decision remains with local people. The decision needs to be made by the local or the joint committees. There is no imposition. And I think the Cabinet member has made it clear. And it remains, it's very important that we don't think that one size fits all. Different high streets have different lengths, have different issues, have different neighbourhoods, impacts and so on. There is no attempt to standardise, but there is an attempt to bring attention to the necessity to have efficient parking management. But to me, it's very clear, the decision is up to the local community, through the local committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Zulie then Alice, sorry, Julie then Alice.
Just a simple point to draw out the recommendation at point eleven. And I welcome the commitment to improving the safety around school areas. And I'm sure that our safer travel team will be very happy to be engaged with that.
And also, hopefully, it will discourage vehicles, idling outside schools, which is kind of part of the, one of the kiosks, things that public health is trying to prevent.
That's exactly the point I was about to make. I think it's great. And the idling, I think it's very important now that we do consider our green future, and this is part of it. So I find this very exciting, and it's the first steps that we need to take to making sure that we manage our air pollution. Well done, Matt.
So, Matt, you have eleven recommendations. Yes, are those agreed? Thank you very much. Item nine, then, the mental health review programme. Sinead. No, sorry. Yeah, Sinead, yeah. Thirteen, yeah.
Thank you, Leader. I'll be very brief and succinct, if that's okay. This is a very straightforward report for information for us all. But it is also seeking approval to move to phase two of the mental health programme. As my Cabinet, council colleagues will recall, Surrey County Council served notice on Surrey and Borders Partnership Trust to terminate the Section seventy-five agreement. The Section seventy-five meant that Surrey and Borders Partnership Trust had responsibility to deliver mental health services via the direct management of a pool of adult social care staff. This agreement commenced in 2012 and so predates the CARE Act from 2014. A recent review culminated in notice being served in February 2019. And in line with the notice period, the agreement came to an end in November 2019. Phase one immensely commenced and resulted in 1,200 cases and 180 members of staff transferring back to the council. Phase two of the programme now needs to take place. And this report outlines the ambitions to deliver that and sets out how that adult social care mental health team will establish a clear personal and professional identity and contribute alongside our partners towards transforming the existing system. If I could draw you to section thirteen of the report. This section sets out how adult social care mental health will fulfil the ambition to be at the forefront of best practice. Key customer-facing features include, but are not limited to, focusing on early interventions, staff development, bringing best practice from the outside in to County Hall, adopting review findings and reviewing all parts of the current mental health service and defining the roles of our partners. All of the findings from these actions will shape and inform any changes in roles and structures needed to meet the requirements of the new operating model. And as this is a significant programme, it is imperative that to get it right for our residents first time, phase two is well managed and coordinated. Chair, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Surrey and Borders Partnership Leader Team and ask my Cabinet colleagues to endorse this. Throughout the notice period, some challenges were presented. However, these were ironed out at the earliest opportunity. In general, there has been very clear and positive communications between Surrey and Borders Partnership and Surrey County Council, and a strong commitment to partnership working to ensure the smooth transition of phase one. More importantly, a strong sense of enablement has emerged between Surrey and Borders Partnership Trust and Surrey County Council to demonstrate our abilities to work together to transform our services and improve the provision of statutory services and promote the wider mental health agenda and wellbeing of the residents in Surrey. Both organisations are committed to building on the collaborative way of working established throughout the Section seventy-five process and taking this forward for current and future programmes, such as the Surrey Heartlands Integration Plan. By way of conclusion, I would encourage my Cabinet members to support the recommendations set out on page five hundred and twenty-three of the Agenda Pack.
Thank you. Chris Bolton, I think you'd like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Leader. And some momentous and important matters to discuss this afternoon. But I would be remiss, I think, in my duty if I didn't point out that this is one of the most volcanic reports that's come before you in terms of the impact it's made, the challenges that have faced the Act of Transformation, the potential outcomes for some of our most vulnerable people that will result as a result of this work. My history in this area goes back to the nineties when I was the non-executive director of one of the previous incarnations of Surrey and Borders Partnership. And I have chaired mental health user groups and been extensively involved over the years in these issues. What this, I have to say, what this brilliantly written report, I was going to say disguises, is the extent to which the level of transformation that was identified with the transfer of Section seventy-five duties, the extent of the transformation that was required, the overdue work in respect of our CARE Act responsibilities, which had been arguably systematically ignored, and the immense power of the work that's happened to make this phase one of the transformation happen so quickly and so safely, with no SUIs, with no incidents that I'm aware of that have been untoward. And the care with which this is done to transfer the most vulnerable people in those arrangements is outstanding. So I have to pay tribute to that. I have to ask Cabinet members to recognise that of all the pieces of transformation being done, this is among the most significant in the council. And the other reason for my wishing to address you, Chair, Leader, is the fact that there is a Section seventy-five steering group, which will be looking at the current arrangements. It's referred to at paragraph five of the business case. Will monitor the changes until the end of the financial year and develop priorities and areas for joint work in going forwards. I just wonder if it might be possible for a member to observe that work just so that I can be aware of the work going forward. I would enjoy observing it, and I'm sure that I would be able, would be able to report on the continued outstanding progress that's been made by officers. My wholehearted admiration to Liz Uliash and her team.
Thank you very much, Chris. It's much appreciated. In relation to your request, Sinead, will you pick that up with Chris?
Yes, thank you, Liz. I think that's a really good suggestion, and I'll work with Chris on taking that forward.
Thank you. Okay. So unless there's anything we want to add, and Zulie? No, okay. Yeah, no, no, no. I think, as Chris Bolton has said, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, not just for this authority, but for all of our partners and agencies. You know, mental health is, you know, a absolutely key priority. And indeed, how we can all work together as organisations to help. So there is the one recommendation, which is to approve the priorities and work programme for phase two of that programme review. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. So I think that leaves one last item on the public agenda, item fourteen, which is the annual procurement forward plan. Zulie.
Very much, thank you very much, Leader. This is coming to committee. It's a list of projects that unfortunately, due to an administrative error, were missed from the annual procurement forward plan, as you saw it last time. And so we have a list of thirty-four projects, which are now presented in this report. The preceding information in the report is identical as per the annual procurement forward plan we have seen before. And the recommendations, which are listed here, are essentially that we approve these and that those that are, those projects that are listed and highlighted in grey in your paper here are the ones that are to come back to committee expressly. This, of course, doesn't mean that this procurement activity is not mainly known to individual members of the Cabinet as it proceeds. So the details, the financial details are in part two. Thank you.
And indeed, we debated this at the previous cabinet, so just adding on some additional items. Three recommendations, are those agreed? Agreed. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of the public meeting. As you have seen, some hugely important matters that we've discussed. You know, we now have a budget, hopefully, which council will approve, and we will push on with the work that, you know, that is so important, I believe, to our residents. So thank you all very much.